Oh, you're serious? I thought you were just like.
We got people in the house tonight. Jesus. Ah, seems like it.
Amazing.
Oh, something's going on. I didn't bring a sheet that's uh.
Do you have an agenda?
Yes, sir.
Hello, Brian Schedel, what are you doing here?
I'm happy. I'm surprised.
Call the City of Oglesby Council meeting to order.
Augubright.
Here.
Cullenin.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Eunice.
Here.
Revara.
Here.
Fledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments on agenda items only. Having none will move on. Approve and discuss how bills will be presented as part of the city council minutes.
Can I ask for this to get uh moved up in front of approving the minutes? Cause there was a discussion at the last meeting that we had talked about about how we wanna present that. Uh, if you look at the the corrected minutes, for example, this is how they always used to be. Just an incredible amount of numbers and and just names and that was it. And as I said before, I didn't think there was a lot of value in that. One of the things that we're proposing instead is the invoice register that is usually it's usually in the back uh area there with the the papers and this is what the commissioners get uh for we approve. I think the best thing to do is go ahead and when we approve the minutes, we put just this file, not file, but the the print off of that attached with the uh with the minutes. Cause to me, you get a lot more data than you get with just numbers and a and a name. You got the name of the the business, you get the invoice date, the due date, the account it was paid from. You even get a small description. I think this actually serves better. Plus, there's less chance that you're gonna have a transcription error by by copying over the data and stuff like that. So, that'd be my recommendation.
And I did check, there is absolutely no requirement that any of that detail be in the minutes at all. So, I totally agree with your assessment, Jason. You know, the printer has much more information in it and it will save you from having to type all that detail over again, Amy.
Well, and technically, this is foible anyways. So, it just it just makes less type of items that people would need to foil if it's if it's.
Why don't we just post the invoice register in another tab?
What do you mean?
We could just have two different columns. So, if you wanna go straight there, you can click so the agenda, the minutes, invoices, whatever.
I guess you could do that. My thought process is that way you they'd be attached to the one that they were approved with. Instead of having to click on a separate link, that way they click the link and that was everything that was approved at that meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so Amy, my suggestion would be you approve bills and the total amount of such and such, which is probably what you've been in the habit of doing recently.
That's the way it is on the agenda right now.
I need a motion in second.
I'll make a motion that that is how we will present the bills in future county, if it future city council minutes.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Approve minutes from the October seventeenth twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the October seventeenth twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Abstain. Approve bills in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cent as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve bills in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara. Approve recommendation from the Oglesby Planning Commission for amendment to the zoning map. Excuse me, map made by Nova Dash Seen LLC. That's uh John Service and Sales. That's for the property uh on the house just east of the um their warehouse on Walnut Street.
I will make a motion to approve recommendation from the Oglesby Planning Commission for amendment of zoning map made by Nova Sun LLC.
And just so you're aware, that's from the current residential classification of R three to a B two commercial and retail servicing district.
I'll second it.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Abstain.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye. Approve one-two-zero-four dash one-one-zero-seven-two-two and ordinance regarding the appointment and lateral transfer to Oglesby Police Department.
At the advice of Mr. Barry, we're gonna table this until next meeting to clean up the language a little bit to make it correct. So, I'll make a motion, we table this until the next meeting.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, before we get to number ten, uh, the chief has asked for a minute.
About the Safety Act, Chief.
About the Safety Act, I'm sorry.
Harry, I didn't ask for a minute. Uh, this proclamation that he's talking about has to do with the what is called the Safety Act. In the Safety Act, uh, the word safety is an acronym for Safety, Accountability, Fairness and Equity Act. There's some issues that I feel like we oughta be concerned about and I've listed them here. This bill, when it was introduced, it's been passed. When it was introduced, it was eight hundred pages, about eight hundred pages. It was presented at four o'clock in the morning, a stack about that big, and presented about four o'clock in the morning and it passed at five o'clock in the morning. Without any public input, without any prosecutors, judges, state's attorneys, public defenders, or any law enforcement input whatsoever, this law passed. It passed the House with a minimum required votes of sixty votes. This this uh law will mandate excessive police training without funding. It'll increase our budget, not all other police departments' budgets for training and overtime. It mandates excessive amounts of reporting for police agencies. Currently, the police department doesn't have a an actual secretary. The type of reports they're gonna require on a monthly basis will have to have one. It's gonna have body cam reports, use of force reports, training reports, uh, mental, all mental health calls have to be reported each month. This bill eliminates cash bail. Criminals will be charged and released for crimes such as second degree murder, drug-induced homicide, arson, aggravated battery, kidnapping, burglary, robbery, and drug offenses. It'll become the responsibility of the state's attorney to present to the judge why this particular person would be in extreme flight risk and a safety and and a safety threat and to who specifically. So, you can't just say to the entire community, this person's a risk. That state's attorney has to prove that it's a risk to a particular person. This has to be done within forty-eight hours without the ability to gather all the evidence, have it tested, and gather and interview victims and witnesses. The judge can't use other court appearances or past crimes as a reason to hold or not hold. Complaints against officers can be anonymous now and no affidavit is required to file complaint. Then, even unfounded complaints against police officers must remain in their files for forever. It mandates body cams for police officers. Oglesby's purchase of body cams be in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand dollars. The data storage over a three-year period will be around ninety thousand dollars. Then, the people who are released on uh with a ankle monitor is not considered an escapee, even though he takes that off or leaves, you can't do anything, law enforcement can't do anything to that person for forty-eight hours. There's a case about Marcel Hunter, a Chicago land repeat offender. Judge Howard released him on an ankle monitor. He went out to a party, he saw a girl, twenty-two-year-old girl that he didn't like, he shot and killed her while on an ankle monitor. This is one of three hundred and seventy-eight like cases today in Illinois on people that were on those monitors. And the state's attorney, Jim Glasgow, was prosecuting Drew Peterson. Peterson was in jail and he said if he were out while in jail, the FBI was recording him and he said, if I were out of jail right now, I'd go kill state's attorney Glasgow myself. However, he was in jail and he was trying to hire somebody else to do it, but she got prosecuted on it, but he would've been out. Mandates uh law enforcement shall issue a citation in lieu of a custodial arrest for crimes such as disorderly conduct, assault, criminal trespass to land, telephone harassment, and window peeking. So, you got somebody window peeking at your house, we'll come over and we'll issue them the citation and leave. That's the way the law reads. Last and most importantly, the problem with this law and why these state's attorneys and different sheriffs across the state, fifty-eight, I believe, to date, have filed a lawsuit, is that the Illinois Constitution says bills, potential laws, except for appropriations and codification, revision, or rearrangement of laws, shall be confined to one subject. This law, this bill, had at least fifty that affected law enforcement alone, affected us directly, fifty different issues in it. Law has well over fifty subjects in it. It frees criminals the day the law goes into effect, January first, twenty twenty-three. It'll free several criminals. These laws not only hamper hamper police prosecutors and judges' ability to do their jobs, increases budgets, but it also will cause an increase in crime and hinder police from protecting the citizens that they serve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, supposedly, this window peeker, if he's arrested and released, obviously, he goes back, he gets arrested again and released.
So,
How many times?
You can't physically arrest him.
Right.
You're not allowed to touch him.
Right.
So, there is some talk, different state's attorneys are gonna handle it differently. There is some uh southern state's attorneys that have said, he's window peeking, the homeowner comes out and says, I want him charged with trespassing.
You can't do it.
Well, then you can write him a citation.
Station for it.
You can hand him a citation. Some state's attorneys say, once you hand him that citation and he refuses to leave, they interpret this new law to say that you'll be able to physically.
Who wrote this new law?
Um, this this law was uh passed by uh.
The General Assembly.
Yeah, the General Assembly in the House and then it went to the Senate and then the governor signed it.
Yeah, well, there's your problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. So, I need a motion in second.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation in support of Sal County State's Attorney and the LaSalle County Sheriff in regard to the legal challenge to the statute commonly known as the Safety Act.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara.
Next is review amended and re-stated fire protection and ambulance service agreement.
Yeah, just to update the console on this, uh, the mayor and I met with the Fire Protection District Board and we signed a two-year deal with them for contracting out uh the city fire and ambulance departments for um fire and ambulance protection in the rural district. Uh, what we did is we went up three percent compounding per year, so uh two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, it's gonna be fifteen thousand four fifty for fire and also for ambulance. And then it on July first to twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, it goes to fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen per um ambulance and fire protection. Uh, the reason we kinda kept it a little bit lower is because the fire department is in need of a tender that it's gonna it's gonna cost the rural district about four hundred thousand dollars. So, we're trying to work with them so that we can keep our firefighters safe responding to calls. And that's in the works now to purchase that truck. We've gone out for bids.
Need a motion in second?
I, it's already been signed, Mayor. I don't know if we need to approve it to.
I think we should too.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we review, well, I guess we approve the amended and restated fire protection and ambulance service agreement.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara. Next one is approve revised agenda, minutes, and ordinance that were incorrectly numbered on the October seventh in October twenty-first, twenty nineteen, city council meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised agenda, minutes, and ordinances that were incorrectly numbered on the October seventh and October twenty-first, twenty nineteen, city council meetings.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Uh, looking for approval to go out for bids to dare to tear down the home located at six-twenty South Columbia Avenue in Oglesby, Illinois. Uh, this is one of the uh houses uh from Butkus. Is that the front or the back one?
The front one.
The front one?
The back one, as of last week, was fixed uh to the satisfaction of Jim. Jim here, no. You're Jim tonight. Um, so Jim sent me an email. We had put more pressure on him to fix up the back one. We actually gave him a little more time. He was supposed to have it done by October first, but uh we said November first, D-Day, that's it. And he did get it fixed about a week and a half early, actually. So, the front one is yours and you can tear that one down. The back one still remains Mr. Butkus's and has been repaired.
The last house that we tore down, didn't we do that via grant?
We did.
And there was a whole thing with the bats and took forever, but I mean, it did save us, if I remember. I I don't know the exact amount, but wasn't it close to like fifty thousand or was it? I can't remember how much it was. It was a lot.
It was.
So, that's why I don't know, do we wanna go out for bids or do we wanna?
Do you wanna look at grants maybe?
I mean, if there's an opportunity, I mean, if it's fifty thousand dollars, there's a grant opportunity to come up.
Do you know anything, Amy?
Well, the fifty thousand dollar one was for the Reisner Building.
Yeah.
That was.
Well, I think that grant took us like two years to receive the money too.
It did.
So, it was an Illinois grant, so.
I remember it took a long time. We had to wait for the bats and all that other stuff, but I'm just saying, if there's fifty thousand dollars on the table, I'd I'd hate to. I don't know if there's a new grant opportunity for it to come up.
We can look into grants.
So, you wanna table it, Jason, until we?
I'd like to know if there's even one in the works. If there's not one in the works and it's something that we're gonna have to wait, I mean, if we knew in advance that we'd have to wait two years to to tear something down, we wouldn't have done it, right? But obviously, we got the money for it. I'd be curious to know if there's a grant opportunity. If if there isn't one that exists, then then maybe we should then at that point look for the, go out for bids.
I know from prior conversations with Shug earlier in the year, she thought that these grant monies might be reinstated by the end of the year. So, I think it's worth reaching out to her, Amy.
I will do that.
Do you wanna table it for now then?
I would recommend that, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table the approval for going out for bids to tear down a home located at six-twenty South Columbia Avenue, Oglesby, Illinois.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara.
Next is approve parade route requested from We Are Oglesby Association. We Are Oglesby NFP Corporation is hosting a winter parade on Saturday, December twen- tenth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. The parade participants will line up at the Oglesby Alps Lodge, time to be determined. The parade route will go from the Oglesby Alps Lodge, west on Walnut Street, and then at Oglesby Washington School, intersection of Walnut and School Street. We would like the city approval for the parade route uh starting at two A M. until the parade is is over. And the city will.
Two P M?
Close, pardon?
Two P M?
Two P M.
Okay.
Uh, till the parade's over. Parade would start at four P M. Uh, that would give them time to kinda clear the streets and after the parade is over, the city would uh open the uh streets up and we would ensure that there was proper police protection.
I'll make a motion, we approve the parade route request from We Are Oglesby Association.
Second.
Augubright.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Eunice.
Aye.
Revara.
Uh, the next one is old business.
I kinda got one item. I was gonna do it in my reports, but it's kind of a big deal, so I'd probably do it under old business. Um, we've been waiting for this for a long time. We put out a, tried to get the grant for the West Walnut Street um uh waterline that if you remember every time that there'd be a break in a certain, we had about a half-mile section, if there'd be a break, the city would have to shut down. That's been going on for many and many years. Uh, the good news is, um, we finally were able to get the the EZ valves, everything was in place. And not saying that the pipe is any better, but it is now isolated. So, the city is no longer in danger if there's a break that occurs within that half-mile area, then we're not gonna have to shut down the city, close the schools, everything like that. So, bit of good news there. I don't have the total invoices for everything yet, uh, but if I remember right, it should be about what we estimated, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand. But I'll find out when everything comes in what the cost was.
Okay, thank you. I I do have something under uh old business. On Wednesday, um, November eleventh, the park board meant to discuss discuss the possibility of a dog park in Oglesby. The proposed dog park uh has merit. The City of Oglesby need to consider all the facts. Uh, number one, it has uh it has to be neighborhood friendly. Space, from what I understand, is a hundred by two hundred feet. Lights, water, shade, fence, gates, parking lot, benches, shelter. In two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we had a proposed uh estimate for a park, but that was in excess of thirty thousand. Today, by moving the numbers, it's fifty thousand. Uh, we also have a a decision to make uh soon on this. Um, we have playground equipment that needs to be replaced, upgraded at the city parks. There are grants available. The Alps as well as as well as other companies' business will help facilitate the playground equipment upgrade. In all honesty, the city cannot do both at the same time. Uh, at this time, I would suggest that we table the dog park issue and upgrade the playground equipment. So.
For what we have in the TIF, I think we could do both, for sure.
Pardon?
For what's in the TIF alone, I feel like we could definitely afford it. And for what we spend in electrical department on a monthly basis, this would be a speed bump on our bills, really.
We also have to look at that upgrade of that substation and that uh that second feed. I just wanna make sure.
When is that second feed study gonna be done?
Pardon?
When's that second feed study gonna be done?
The stud- the studies.
Find out this week.
The study's complete.
Okay.
They put, what was it again, if I remember right, Ameren sent request off to get approval?
They have requested approval for the second feed from the I C C. They have to get approval to do that.
Yeah. So, we already had, if you remember right, we had one of the switches that we had identified that was bad. We bought it. We actually have it on hand now. The reason it's not installed is because we wanna make sure that it's gonna work with however we have the second feed configured. We wanna make sure it can work in a can in an automated way to where if the city would lose power from this one section, it can automatically switch over and get power from another section. So, we're we're just waiting for that approval, so, whi- which has me concerned, it's been taking so long because we haven't ordered the main equipment for whatever we need for the second feed. And that is what has me the most concerned now is that there's gonna be a long lead time to get that. But our hands are kinda tied until Ameren approves.
Yeah, we we and I get uh I get carried away about our inability, even with the second feed. Right now, uh, if we we can feed from uh Malick Sub to Phoenix Sub, we've got a one-way. We can complete the second uh loop with a twelve. And and that won't take a a whole lot of of wire, but we've gotta replace about twelve or sixteen poles in there. Once we get that, then we can feed each substation. We've we've got some kinda loop where we can uh uh cut down uh any uh any outages that we uh that we do have. And and it has taken entirely too long. But trying to get Ameren and I's and the I C C to move sometime is uh is is kind of a a big hurdle. With that, uh, public comments?
My name is Jay Chris Crossup and from the meetings that I've gone to, different meetings, there seems to be a common thread. One is bringing bringing business in Oglesby and people in Oglesby. So, not being aware of or knowledgeable about the economic and development program that we have here in Oglesby. I Googled it. I also Googled Peru's, LaSalle's, and Ottawa's. I have them here. Um, Peru, I have not figured out yet. I'm still studying that one. LaSalle has a nice one, lot of information, but Ottawa is heads and shoulders above above everybody else. Ottawa has so much information that I couldn't write it out. But what some things I thought was interesting was their economic and development site talks about Ottawa itself. Talks about Ottawa industrial park highlights, I eighty industrial highlights, downtown highlights, I eighty retail locations, and available industrial properties. Much more information than this. So, then I Googled Oglesby. I was I'll keep it nice. It's weak at best. There's three things that Oglesby's site has on it. One is about TIF districts, one and four. One is about edge tax credit and one is about twenty twenty-two facade improvement program. Then it has city hall numbers and phone numbers, whereas these other ones will give you the councilman or however they they do their city uh government and um information about the economic and development person. Matter of fact, even Ottawa has a bio of that particular person. So, I have two suggestions. One, get rid of this. Hire a web designer that would come in and create some, create create a product that's informative and useful. To me, thi- this thing here adds no value as to, in my opinion, as to bringing in business or people. And another one, my other suggestion, because I am not familiar with what's going on in Oglesby, maybe that's my fault. I believe that the economic and development person should report out at every council meeting, just like these guys do, as to what is currently going on, what is in short-term, future, and long-term goals. To make us, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but I don't know what's going on in this town and I would like to know. But don't, and and, you know, sometimes I feel like we, Oglesby, are afraid to look at other cities and see what they're doing and I'm not sure why. I've worked in situations like that, where I worked at a plant that did not wanna look at other plants for whatever reason. But don't be afraid to look at other places around to get some ideas and and build from that. Like I say, Ottawa, unbelievable site. You guys should check out Ottawa's uh, I, all I did was Google in economic and development, Ottawa, Illinois, just like I did for Oglesby, LaSalle. And uh, cause there's nothing in this document that's gonna entice a business or people to relocate to Oglesby. And you know, you talk about um advertising and all that, well, um this is the type of advertisement for people that are looking to come to Oglesby. And I just think that we need a better product than this. Hire somebody to do a good product. Check out LaSalle. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Fulbridge. Mr. Mayor, you brought up about dog park tonight. We spent an hour in here discussing it, whatever date it was. You also brought up about the parks and the grants. You wanna table the dog park. Confused as to, first of all, who approved the spending for the parks? I missed a meeting, apparently. I never saw anything. I FOIA'd records. I have noticed that we've spent over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Again, without any authorization, that anybody I know of, I believe you authorized it. I don't know how that worked. I thought there was a certain limit as to what you could spend, around twenty thousand dollars in an emergency. But usually the council, I thought, was supposed to be able to come in and say, hey, we're gonna spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
What are you talking about?
Commissioner Kirk, about the waterfall over here, the fountain. Luckily, I did, because I had a few of the FOIAs, Commissioner Curran was nice enough to have gone through and found those four hundred surveys that were mailed out with our bills from years ago. In his four hundred surveys, I don't have the exact numbers here, I didn't know you were gonna bring up the dog park. Believe there were like three hundred and twenty-three returned surveys with information on there and suggestions. There was two suggestions for a dog park, as well as two suggestions for a mural. One suggestion brought up something about the city used to have a fountain out in front. So I believe there was seventy-eight point three percent or five percent, somewhere in there, seventy-plus percent, said that they're either for vacating that, just not having anything in Seneca Square, or to go with some sort of a cost limit on there, 'cause you guys had thought a million dollars or something. So during those surveys, that's what they said. They wanted the cost limit on there. Just wondering right now, I believe there's plans for a stage and some other stuff over there, a mural. What is the cost limit on that? Has that been established? Is there like a total cost that we're not going to exceed? Over here on the Seneca Square?
You got the public comments.
Oh, I was just asking the question. Okay. Well, I just wanted to notify you that that, I did see that in there, and the suggestion of the constituents, they asked for there to be a limit on that. As far as the dog park goes, I don't know where you got the numbers. No idea.
Can I?
That's above and beyond anything I would believe that you would need for that dog park, especially if we were to go into it slowly. There's stuff going on down at Lehigh that I don't know, I don't know the necessity for that. There are people here in town that would love to have a dog park. I don't, I think we should ask people before we go and nick something and just take, I don't know who, who suggested that volleyball thing down there, or pickleball, or whatever else is going on. I haven't seen anybody bring it up or say that it's a necessity for the town at this time. I do believe that a dog park would bring people to the town. I don't know that that's gonna do it. We already have a frisbee golf out at IBCC. I don't see a lot of use out there. It's just a few suggestions there.
I don't have the survey, I haven't seen the survey results in a couple of years. I haven't looked at it. What was the stat you were talking about? Seventy-eight percent people wanted to vacate it?
Seventy-three point five percent either wanted to vacate it or said to put a cost limit on it.
Do a smaller scope?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
To the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been issued a cost limit, and this is just pretty much a free-for-all at this point, as far as I can see by the records and everything. It's just, everything's being spent. I don't know why, who, where, who's saying it, but it's going.
All the bills were approved at this council meeting. And, and, and we, and we, and we did it in steps.
The bills were approved. Was it the projects?
Well, we've done it a step at a time.
So.
And let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question, Rich.
Sure.
So you're suggesting that we put the dog park in and not, not upgrade the playground equipment?
I don't even believe that I mentioned playground equipment.
Okay, thank you.
But I do know that the Elks are trying to help with some sort of a funding for the playground equipment.
Don't we have funding for both? I mean, isn't that, isn't there money in the TIF for the both?
I believe there is. I'm just looking at the models.
And like I said, as far as this deal, as far as this deal at Lehigh Park, Mayor, it was never brought to my attention, and I believe that when you discarded me from the Police Department, you pointed me to the Park Department. And I, I knew nothing about any of this. Nothing.
Well, maybe you should have more conversations with your park foreman.
You don't tell me nothing. You guys don't say nothing to me. You go over my head and you talk behind my back. Typical. Hasn't changed. It's terrible.
I suggest you have more conversations with JP there.
And be lied to all the time? No, I don't think so.
Are you accusing him of lying to you?
Who?
JP?
No, you.
Come on, Cully.
Enough said. That's, that's, that's it.
I think so.
It's the way it is, mayor.
Commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report tonight.
I have nothing, mayor.
Nothing, nothing tonight.
I just have a couple of things. Reservoir cleaning's gonna start this week. There should be no impact to any of the residents in case they see the tanker out there. That's just to maintain the pressure. Street Department, LEAF Act continues. The only other thing I have, I didn't have a chance to say it. I felt like I should explain. The reason I abstained, my vote for what the Plan Commission, wasn't anything against the Plan Commission, but again, I'll restate it. Back in April, we sent six items to the Plan Commission, two of which will solve some of our administrative issues that we have with our building and permitting process. And two of them are with electrical permitting process that could potentially save somebody's life someday. So I said last meeting, I will not be taking any more votes on anything that comes from the Plan Commission until we send those other six items to the Plan Commission. That's all I got.
I just got a few things. I wanna thank the city clerk. We got an issue, we got a rebate issue from Republic for eleven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and one cents. Sun Internet will become the Oglesby, the opportunity to bring fiber optic internet to residents and business is a giant step for our city. We've had a number of questions or concerns about what how the city can make charitable donations. Vince Brawley wrote a letter August thirty-first, twenty ten. I think it spells it out quite clearly, and that's what we have to, have to follow.
I did some checking on that down, too, and it has not changed since the.
I didn't believe so. I, I will say something about the other thing that's just, we've got, I think of my if I add it correctly, we've had twenty-two FOIA requests between October fourth and November eleventh. You know, we haven't been charging. Over the last three and a half years, we've had a FOIA or a DOG complaint about once every six weeks or so. And it's been twenty-two filed right now, and it does put a burden on our clerical staff. So I have, I'll make a motion, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augurine, Colinin, Curran, Udis, Revara.
Aye.